Please.
Mayor Romanek.
Here.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Here.
Commissioner Sui.
Here.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Here.
Commissioner Kasabun.
Here.
May we please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being conducted in accordance with the Oakland Public Meetings Act of 1975, was advertised, posted, and made available to the public as required by statute. The municipal clerk is directed to include a statement in the minutes of this meeting. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, Mayor.
Any presentations?
No, Mayor.
Public comment on agenda items only. We have now reached the public comment. For agenda items only, if anybody from the public would like to come to the podium, please state your name, address your concerns. Please limit your comments to five minutes. Seeing none, I will close public comment on agenda items. Discussion of Commissioners. Commissioner Hewitt.
Ah, yes. I gotta give a big kudos, and I'm gonna repeat this in the regular session, to Sam Cruz and her guys, to my OEM director over at the Police Department and officers in the department for last week, last Wednesday. It was cold, it was icy. The move, we had to make the move, as everybody knows, to the new building. And everybody stepped up. I gotta just give kudos to them for that. So, as far as I know, if somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, we are, we have made the whole move to the new building. I think we probably turned over the keys to 15th Street, or will be soon.
Keys have been turned over.
And thank you, actually, to everybody that was involved, but I did have to give special shout out to everybody that was over there last week moving things in and out. It's cold out there, folks. Don't need to tell anybody that. Everybody, keep safe, be safe. Give credit to, our fire department's been busy. We had to go help Bridgeton with a fire. They've been busy here, they just finished up a call again a little while ago. We had another big fire over in Trailer Park. Had a lot of assistance. We had two companies from Vineland come in, wanted to cover the city to make sure our residents were safe, because all of our firefighters were out there fighting the fire with our equipment. One from Vineland came to assist us at that fire. And where the fire was located, it's no fault of anybody in this city, past or present. There's no water out there, so that means there was no fire hydrants. So, poor Elizabeth came in to help us, because they have a tanker to supply us with water to take care of that fire. Again, kudos to everybody. Kudos to PD, they're out there working away. Kudos to the help that we have in town from the Sheriff's Department. Vineland PD's even been in town. We're working, we're working with what we have. Just thank you to everybody. Thank you to city employees that are out working in this weather. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Hewitt. Thank you for your kind words addressing all that's happening then underneath your department throughout the city. We appreciate that. Commissioner Sui.
Yes, I want to address the hazardous waste that was in the warehouse. It was apparently there for years, I don't know how many. I did a little research today after receiving a phone call this morning, or actually returning a phone call this morning. There were two quotes provided, one for twenty-four something and one for nineteen something, nineteen thousand and something. Mr. Finch is our recycling coordinator, and the caller had said that the landfill would take it. Well, that's true for a resident, but it's not true for the municipality. So, the materials we had in the warehouse were qualified as hazardous materials, requiring them to be disposed of properly. So, we had to have a company that specializes in that type of removal handy, handle that for safety reasons. Now, I received an email from the purchasing agent wanting an okay of a Commissioner to go ahead. So, there's a couple of things I factored in my decision. One, the materials had to go because of time limit, they had to go fast because of time limit constraints, turning the building over to the people that bought it, or we would've been on the hook for over sixty thousand dollars for a month's rent. Second, the cost of moving the materials versus the cost of us possibly moving them to another place and possibly spilling them and contaminating soil or another building, which could've went into the hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, if you wish to open the quotes, the quotes have the cost for the chemist in there to analyze the stuff and all that stuff. I have the high quote, but I don't have the low quote. If you're interested in that, I will certainly give you the high quote, as well as the email from Mr. Finch. So, that's where we ended up with that. And that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Sui. Commissioner Kasabun?
Well, I just have to piggyback on Commissioner Hewitt for also, kudos to everyone. They work very, very hard. It's been cold, we had that little bit of icy snow. And the hazardous waste, I do have from what was there. I did talk to Mr. Finch today, got a little lesson. So, yes, the CCIA only takes from the residents, not from the businesses. And by law, this is what we had to do. And I do know that he had contacted three people, three companies with quotes. And the one was the cheapest, I believe. Am I correct, Commissioner Sui?
Yeah, Sam told me two.
Two, yeah, the third one did not come back yet.
It was under the bid threshold, the other one didn't come back, correct.
Okay. That's all I have right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Kasabun. Vice Mayor Watson?
Yeah, I want to discuss, I believe it's resolution item number one. It's to remove reso, it's to remove the resolution from the table and appoint Brock Russell to municipal attorney. I have here a list of litigation that Brock is currently working on.
Commissioner, can you speak into the mic?
Testing, one, two, a little better.
Thank you.
Just a few items that Brock's already currently working on. You know, for the past, you know, three years, I mean, a little bit shorter for me, he served this commission well. You know, he comes here every meeting, he represents us well. When we go to closed session, you know, he provides us all the information, up to date. And, you know, he follows up on a lot more than probably that's required of him. Not only does he represent us well here, and us as Commissioners, but, you know, when we go to meetings with redevelopers, or if we're onsite with the DRBA, going out to the airport, looking at buildings, I could tell you personally from attending those meetings, that Brock is probably one of the best representatives we have for the city of Millville. You know, if we go a different route, you know, if we choose not to reappoint Brock, you know, that's gonna be a major loss, not to us, but it's gonna be a major loss to the city. You know, Brock is available to us at our convenience for face-to-face, you know, conversations. When we do our investigations, we're trying to follow up on things, trying to make sure that we're doing the right thing the right way. You know, if we go through any kind of like RFP or professional services, you know, everything's got to be done through email, through phone. And, you know, that's gonna, gonna hold up the process. For any kind of municipal or any kind of government, it always takes forever. You know, losing Brock, you know, that's gonna affect that tremendously. I, to be honest with you, the experience that I have with a lot of city of Millville employees, it's eye-opening, because there's a lot of great people that work here. And, you know, from the moment I stepped through their door, you know, Brock was immediately one of those people that was dependable and, you know, represented the city well, like I said. Losing him, again, it's gonna be tremendous loss to the city. The time that I had with you, Brock, if this doesn't go through tonight, I just want to thank you for everything. You deserve a lot better from us. That's all I gotta say.
I like, we're discussing that, right? So, I just want to add that law's become very specialized. As a result, I think we have seven or eight other lawyers on retainer. We have redevelopment council, we have bond council, we have labor council, we have foreclosure council, we have tax council, and there are others, I can't even remember off the top of my head. But another thing that happened when we, when we brought Brock inside, as you can see, you know, he worked several years outside the city, and we brought him in as an employee. So, one of the things that happened when we brought him in as an employee, he no longer had professional legal staff. So, we were subcontracting out the paralegal work. Now, that's important, because it takes somebody that's paralegal to enter this stuff into the court system. Over the past couple of months, we've had, we actually had a paralegal on staff that we were giving a four thousand dollar stipend to, to do that work. Mr. Watson has since switched that duty to another individual that will get a four thousand dollar stipend, but will not be able to enter that information into the court system, so that'll have to go out to another attorney's office to do that. There are other things I'll go into, if it, if it gets off the table, there's some other stuff I don't really want to discuss, but I will. You know, Brock did do a great job for a long time. But in my opinion, over the last year, I think we can do better and save some money with outside counsel. There are outside councils available that represent other cities in the same type of litigation, and they are available. So, if we do go outside, there's, there's good lawyers out there.
Again, I try to hold professionalism, and I don't like going back and forth. But there's a lot of things I would really like to say. But I'll just try to keep it as simple as I can. There's already been a certain move, you know, to show that if you work with Commissioner Watson, you know, there's probably gonna be repercussions. And I have a very strong feeling that, you know, this move to not reappoint Brock is along those same lines. And, you know, I really feel bad for, you know, any city employee that gets stuck in that position, you know, between, you know, political conflict. And just like, you know, Sam Cruz, just a tremendous person for the city. Not only does she does a lot of work for the city of Millville, but she also does a lot of work for the community. You know, when it came to UEZ, trying to decide who was gonna keep working with that, Sam was the best person, for sure. I wanted to reappoint her, but under no circumstance that I want to put her in a situation if she was between me and Joe. Part of the reason why I wanted a deputy director underneath my position to take that on, because other than Sam, we don't have that many people that are familiar with the UEZ, including myself. So, again, this move goes through, where Brock's not reappointed, it's just another step to show city employees, if you're working with Watson, guess what, you know, you're gonna have repercussions to doing so. And I hope that the rest of the commission understands that.
Well, I'll get, take my second bite of the apple, I guess. I didn't really want to get into this. So, let's look at Mr. Watson's day two with Mr. Russell. So, they attempted to remove the person in charge of economic development from that position, and appointed an individual from Mayor Romanek's department to that position. That individual is a politician from another city. I told them that economic development is one of the responsibilities under the Department of Public Affairs. That's under the mayor. So, Mr. Watson thought economic development was under his purview as they reassigned the duties and powers of Commissioners, and it wasn't. And apparently, Mr. Russell thought the same way. Another example. Well, let's see. We could talk about attempts to remove, remove the administrator, a longtime resident. But that requires a majority vote, something I had to point out to both Mr. Watson and the attorney. So, when we talk about employees, it seems like we'll pick and choose which employees we like and which employees we don't. As far as Sam goes, she's a great employee. I've worked with her four years in the past, and this time around, and, you know, the simple thing is, if you want the responsibility, you want the job, you should do the job. You know, on day one, NEPRO, Mr. Watson taking over, NEPRO was scheduled for a meeting to come in. So, you know, imagine you're going to school, and you cut class for two years, and then when you graduate, you want to ask the teacher for help. So, he sends an email to me, asking me, due to my experience, that I would, you know, he'd appreciate my help on that. Well, quite frankly, it's not in my purview, and wasn't my job. So, my response was, talk to one of your co-conspirators. Now, you know, I'll leave it at that for now. Again, if it comes up for a vote, there's some other stuff I will bring to the public light that maybe Mr. Watson isn't aware of, maybe he is, but we'll see.
You know, what I've become very aware of is the changing of the narrative. And I think there's been a lot of patience that's been displayed on my end. That's kinda uncommon. Probably ask my wife. You know, we get up here, and there's, you know, just the narrative changes. You know, and I, I want to speak on it, just because, you know, our business administrators over here to our right, and I've had a good experience with them. And, you know, the very first thing that I did, you know, you know, again, publicly, we changed the narrative, right? You know, we remember the, when I was put in the Revenue and Finance position, you know, you can go back and watch the video. It was, you know, publicly mentioned, or publicly said, you know, that, you know, I was and had to be the backup of the mayor, attend his meetings when he couldn't. So, yeah, you know, I was inquiring about everything I could, I couldn't sleep at night. So, following day, and business administrator, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I came to you, and I told you, I said, you're the first person I'm talking to about this. Because under no circumstance that I want it to affect the way you thought of me, and I don't want to lose any respect that you had for me. And I told you, this is what I was like to investigate. And I said, I don't know if it's gonna go through or not, this is what I want to investigate. And I told you, I said, you know, I have an idea for economic development, and I want to look into it further. From there, I went to Pam, our human resources, and followed up. And I got a couple of different titles from her. And then, from Pam, I went directly to our city solicitor, who reminded me that the Department of Economic Development is not under my power and duties. He said, but we can reach out to the mayor and ask him what he thinks of the idea. And that's what we did that night. And my idea was to use a city employee who had a phenomenal background, phenomenal, or just a resume that was just unbelievable, including one of the projects that I'm working on for LSA, is the downtownship project. He worked ten years to get a sewer plant down in downtownship. You know, he, just tremendous person, you know, it just, the knowledge that he has was unmatched. And, you know, I think that was gonna be very beneficial, especially if we're looking at larger products, projects, that included working with the county, working with the authority, maybe working with, you know, neighboring townships, you know, to maybe do a water and sewer, you know, run the Laurel Lake. We're doing water, but sewers, you know, obviously tremendously expensive, pump stations are gonna be needed, but we kinda came together with neighboring township. Maybe that's a project that we can attack, or maybe go after and try to get the funding for. About an hour and a half after my recommendation to the mayor, an email was sent, and that person was terminated. So, glad you brought that up. So, as far as, you know, eliminating business administrator, there's, there's no action on my part that I've ever took to do that.
So, I just had a question.
Commissioner Sui, I also like to make a statement that when somebody comes and it gets an elected role, you become a politician. You now have to play politics. But the role, as I take it, as mayor of Millville, I build relationships with other communities. I can call the mayor of Vineland anytime. I can get in contact with Mayor Kelly, Mayor Bridgeton. I can call Senator Testa. I can call any Commissioner from the county. I could call Mayor Wildin of Marsh River Township, Commercial Township, Ron Sutton. The list goes on of the people that I know in the community, and how we can build that. We also have people in every municipality that has the expertise in doing so. I do not know anything about gallons per minute of pump stations and sewage flow that I constantly get asked by some of our businesses here in Millville. I always refer to the public, to the professionals in the city that can do so, or go to those department heads and just say, hey, follow up, let me know, and then I'll reach back, since this person has reached out to me. For instance, common discussion is of not Oatley, Innovation Foods. They're discharged, I, once again, I'm not the professional, but Mr. Catalana reaches out to me, I reach out to then who in the city, and through water and sewer. That's how government goes, it can go top-down, top-down from mayor. Here in the city of Millville, we have the Walsh Act. We each are in charge, and I've said this before, we each are in charge of our own departments. Let us run our departments, let us work together within our departments, but also let's work together with each of our departments. Somebody asks me, hey, can I want to speak with, you know, Vice Mayor Watson, Commissioner Watson, I can either be informal and just shoot them a quick text, be like, Commissioner so-and-so from somewheres wants to talk to you. Give him a call back. That's his, that is his prerogative to give that person a call back. But not to say that, you know, we need, you know, the statement says, you know, we need somebody to go to these, to go to these events or these meetings and such. Underneath the sunshine law, we can only have two Commissioners going. Usually, I go to everything and anything that I can attend. It worked like that with Mayor Orndorf. If she couldn't go, I was trying to go to everything that she could go, that she couldn't go to, and vice versa. It's to be involved to what extent you want to be involved with. If you don't want to be involved, then maybe you can try to hire somebody in your position. But I feel a need be that, as the mayor of Millville, I should go to every meeting possible that I can to ask those questions and represent the city of Millville as best I can. And then I go to those meetings and conferences and such with the professional staff that I think would be worthy to go to those such events. Commissioner Sui?
Yeah, so you already had somebody in mind you wanted to hire that worked here before you made any maneuvers, I guess, right?
No.
You just said you did, you had somebody that you had in mind that was well-versed in economics. So, you did have somebody.
To work in economic development.
Yeah, so you did have somebody.
I pitched that idea to the mayor, yeah.
So, I will say this, seems to me, we've been doing pretty good with getting companies here, CRP. Livoni, NEPRO expanding, AgriTerra back on board, ready to break ground soon, and other conversations are ongoing. So, again, I will reiterate at least my experience working with the CCIA, how they had messed up projects, how they have cost the taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars in Millville, and with very little results as to the promises. Second, when you're trying to expand sewer, the first thing you might want to look at is the sewer service area map. You'll notice that those other townships are not on it. You can get that map from either Engineering or the DEP. And before you provide sewer service down there, that has to be on the sewer service area map. Conversations with the DEP, when I had the Department of Revenue and Finance, what I was told was, we received requests to put it on there. We didn't act on those requests, so you can consider that, it's probably not gonna happen. That would be the first step before you do anything else. What we should be concentrating on is Nav Avenue. That's what we should be concentrating on. That will have the biggest impact to the city of Millville. I understand your desire to help other townships, but our job here is to represent Millville, not downtownship, not Commercial Township, not any, not Marsh River Township, Millville, that's our job. That's all I have, Mayor.
Yeah, you're right, it is our job, be worried about the city of Millville. Unfortunately, we can't run sewer down there because it's too expensive. You know, it's under, you know, it's a tough feat, but, you know, if we go at it and we try to find the right funding, maybe with the assistance from other townships, making our sewer plant, a regional sewer plant, where we can use, you know, the eleven million dollar infrastructural upgrade for the secondary, actually use the flow that we, you know, prepared for, you know, and also, you know, increase ratables, and also take care of the environmental impacts just as septic, when they're having fecal coliforms in their wells down at Laurel Lake. You know, so I think, having had, doing that, you know, was a, you know, pretty good plan, but, you know, you need to write the people in place.
Well, that was the.
Just as you said, Mayor, you know, we rely on a lot of departments, right? We have a Department Head for Streets and Roads, Department Head for Parks, we have a city solicitor here, you know, we have a lot of people, we have a fire chief, police chief, all people that are professionals in their field. And I'm just looking at, just look at it as a resident of the city of Millville. That's what I'm gonna look at it as. Looking at it as a resident of the city of Millville, when we're talking about meetings with the DRBA, plans for the airport, plans with developers, do we want somebody that uses it as a time where we can campaign for his next term? Do we want somebody that comes up here, you know, and attacks city residents as they come up here, and, you know, they speak on their, you know, their concerns? You know, if somebody comes up here and makes other Commissioners look bad? You know, I mean, just the history of the person, and there's probably people in this room, you know, just the way that he treats employees, you know, I've seen all this stuff personally. And I could tell you, as a resident, I wouldn't want either of those two in a meeting representing us as the city of Millville. So, yeah, and I don't want myself representing the city of Millville. I'll go, I'll attend, just so I can make the decision. But the decision, what, what I'm trying to say is, is when we put these things together, I want the best people that knows what they're doing, that has experience, that has a background in it, to get things done.
I will just ask you to do one thing in between meetings. Ask Mr. Russell, you've received notice of tour claim, you and Mr. Hewitt. Ask Mr. Russell, who recommended the lawyer that filed those complaints against you. Ask him, and see if he tells you who actually recommended him.
Can I answer that question?
It's all right, Brock, I already.
Let, let me answer, because the person that asked me for a recommendation was being sued by someone who had a shop in town. That's the lawyer I recommended for that particular situation, not for something else. Now, that private citizen decided to hire that lawyer to do something else, to file a tour claim notice. So, what you're saying is not true. And by the way, I think so the record's clear, the entire city is within the sewer service area.
Yes, this city, not the other townships.
This city is.
Yeah, this city is, not the other townships, that's correct. And where we're at at the water, we ran it down to Laurel Lake. Commercial Township didn't have the money to connect to it now. So, the plan was to leave it, build it in a way so that they could connect to it later. So, if they didn't have the money for the water, they certainly don't have the money for the sewer, which will cost many times more.
And I'm glad you brought the tour claim up, too. You know, because, you know, since I've been here, you know, when it came to DeSantis Group, the Wheat Project, you know, I've been very supportive of that. And I'm not too sure what you told, you know, Mr. DeSantis, but, you know, he comes up here at the podium, and, you know, he speaks at me like, and he's, he mentioned that it cost him millions of dollars, and I just don't understand that, because, you know, I supported, you know, the actions that he's trying to do and anything that was presented on the agenda. You know, but what I can tell the public is, right after I got Revenue and Finance, you know, I was told that somebody was gonna make my life miserable. Yep, so I guess that entailed, you know, maybe telling lies to developers of city of Millville, maybe going after public employees that work with me, maybe putting an Oprah request at my job, you know, things of that sort. And, you know, this last meeting, you know, there was a couple of people that Joe probably asked to go up there and talk, beat me up a little bit, if I could take a beating. The, they said I couldn't handle it. And I mean, I think that's just like, I think with the things that were accomplished, you know, especially being one of the least, one of not many people that will go toe-to-toe with, you know, Commissioner Sui, and, you know, his background and the way he is, and many people know that. And I think I've done pretty well, you know, especially working, you know, forty, fifty hours at a full-time job, you know, trying to be involved with the city. I think I've done pretty well, you know, we got the Gaudelli Building, which is a great home for the Parks Department. You know, we're moving forward with contract negotiations now that Commissioner Sui's out of the way. You know, we got the solids waste utility up and going. You know, I'm kinda, I'm proud of being involved in all that. And, you know, I'll just keep trucking along, keep doing what I'm doing. So, thank you.
Well, one last thing. Commissioner Sui's the one, not Commissioner Watson, got the development in here so that we could afford to give our city employees raises. Had you looked at the CFO's financial projections, without getting that development in here, you would've been facing a ten-cent tax increase for every year for the next four years. That's ten cents per hundred. As far as people going toe-to-toe with me, I have probably taken more criticism than any other Commissioner up here, from that podium on Facebook and via phone calls. There is no doubt that I get criticism, I'm okay with that, I can live with criticism. And as far as me asking certain people to come up here, one of them's here. So, let's see what happens. That's all I got, Mayor, I've had enough of this nonsense.
Can I make one comment?
Sure.
Would you want to wait till closing comments, Commissioner?
I can do that, too.
Thank you, Ms. Kasabun.
Thank you.
My turn. I do appreciate, I heard we have a little, I didn't know about the other fires, Commissioner Hewitt, the, of assistance. I did hear the one today in the woods, and it certainly caused. Glad to see the extreme help from New Jersey firefighters. Over, I think, three trucks came, and I passed, did pass a bulldozer.
And that's important, not to interrupt you, but it's important, it's on my mind. In that situation, in that situation.
In that situation, in that situation, because I can imagine, there'll be probably complaints tonight on, you know, the extra governing facility in the city, Facebook. You can't take a fire engine down a path 200 yards back into the woods. So yes, we, in that situation, this is the second fire we've had in that area in a month and a half.
Wow.
We can't get back there. Forest fire trucks are made to get back there. This is a situation that we tried to rectify a little bit a few months ago when Commissioner Ranello was here. And if you remember back to the last meeting, we catch flak for not taking moves on the homeless. When we make moves on the homeless, then we catch flak from the same exact people that want to hit us both ways. Not saying that that fire had anything to do with it, but homeless situation, we all know, is a massive situation throughout the county, throughout the state, throughout everywhere. Yes, I appreciate the heck out of the fact that around this area in Millville, I can count...
Don't we have a fire for it?
Five forest fire trucks.
Within, at least, the county, right?
Within a 10-minute run, including Vineland, the district warden is in mind.
I can think of one on Cedarville.
He responded. Yep, Cedarville, out in Buckshoe Road, heading down towards Marsh Town. We depend on that. But we also depend on the fact that, you want to talk about getting beat up? I mean, it's one way today, it's one way tomorrow, but it's the same group of people, and we are always there to respond. This city's always going to respond and take care of people no matter what.
It's never easy for, you know, I'm not a firefighter, but I know just, you know...
And our guys stayed out there in case they needed to help the forest firefighters. They just got home a little bit ago.
It's cold. When it's hot, it's even worse with all the gear. When it's cold, you have, you know, potential water supply issues. Obviously, there's a fire hydrant nearby, but in the case when it's these sub-freezing temperatures and, you know, close to zero degrees.
And the whole public safety team is dealing with that, from police to fire to rescue.
Yep. I appreciate your words earlier, and you'll say them again as a...
Oh, sure, I will.
As well as the regular session.
Yep.
Busy times in the city, like Commissioner Hewitt said, you know, we did, and Commissioner Sui, I said, handed over the keys to 15th Street, did complete the move over a course of two days, two or three days. I gave Sam a call. Sam does act as the mayor's assistant. I gave her a call just to update, and, you know, she was mid-box handling, walking in, and I was like, "I'll call you back." So I know it was just through the phone visual that, I'm sure they acted quickly. Did not need to pay a fine by staying a little later, but it'll be nice to use the whole portion of the building come in the future. New year, new events. Please keep up with the events on the city website and through, obviously, our Millville recreational page on Facebook, where Ms. Cruz and Ms. Tomlin provide a lot of updates on what happening, is happening with the city, in case you do not want to listen to us talk or discuss. Other than that, I have nothing at this time. We have now reached the public comment portion of our meeting. Anyone who would like to address the commission, please go to the podium, state your name and address your concerns. Please limit your comments to approximately five minutes.
Mary Messick, here of Millville, forgive my voice, but here's my main concern. I've sat through multiple commission meetings, work sessions, from way back from the Mill Van Hook to now. This is about the second or third time I can actually say, I have witnessed and watched a commission meeting remind me of a game that came out one year that was real popular called Rock'em, Sock'em Robots. That's exactly what this commission tonight in a work session reminds me of. Yes, we have the right to disagree, and we have a right to agree. We have a right to have an opinion, but we don't have the right to tear people apart, whether we mention names or we don't mention names. Just as though whatever position one takes, whether it's a doctor, a lawyer, a commissioner, a state assembly member, you have the obligation and the duty to uphold it and to keep one's feelings to oneself and verbalize them on a personal note to the person that is upsetting you, not tear them apart where you have people watching you, whether it be TV, Facebook, or wherever, or even in person. This is appalling. This is not what Millville is. Millville is good. Millville can be a whole lot better. We need to work together. United we stand and divided we'll fall.
Please hold that there.
I don't know if you guys have discussed this a little late, but Doug Albrecht, County Commissioner, just one of the, a concern that came to mind that, about the airport, which I comment a lot about, that I positive the Millville Commission, what they've done to start looking about taking the Millville Airport back for the city. I do it on the radio, I do it in front of people, I do it at practices to say that I really, this commission's taken a bold step that, and then, by me saying this, I was told that you've received a letter from the FAA, from basically putting you at a timetable, especially when you're negotiating. I consider it very unfair, and I expressed that, too. I got it today, I got a call from the Congressman's aide and said that, that that is unfair while you guys are negotiating over the next five years if you're a way out. And I said that several times, unfair. So I get on my tangent about this. I was also told that Cape May, who I expressed this commission has, at that time, was also doing the same thing you guys are doing and are ahead of you. Well, and I've been told that they're not anymore. They're going back. So I called, I called the Commissioner down in Atlantic County today, in Cape May County, and he said, "No, Doug, we're continuing with it. We've also received the same threat from the FAA." And they didn't get a letter, they had a meeting with their counsel, with their solicitor. No commissioner was in the room. And after that meeting, they understood where the threat was coming from. It's, they believe it's associated with the RBA, friendly to them. And again, they believed it was unfair, but they're continuing their progress in what they're doing. They're not stopping, and I want to make sure this commission knows that. I also picked up the phone and called, at one time, I was in a meeting that the, was in Hamilton with Atlantic City Economic Development Authority, whatever they're called, which is actually a private entity, that they expressed that they saw a, and I consider a rectangle, of Millville Airport, Atlantic City, Cape May, and maybe Woodbine, and they actually had a northern airport, and those airports working together to bring industry and economic development to this area. They, and Mayor, you may know better than I that you're...
The, yeah, the ACEA.
Okay, and you're in communication, which is great. That's the way it should be. It should be on you guys to be talking with them. And they, I just wanted to see if they were still interested if you guys, to fill a hole that if this FAA is putting pressure on you, that they may be available. They said, "We will absolutely meet with the city of Millville anytime, Cape May anytime to discuss how they can help and whatever works out." I did want to say about Cape, Cape May again, they understand what's at stake and they're There's, just so you know, there's not just Millville Airport doing this, not just Cape May Airport, but Newcastle is also doing it. Three out of the five airports they control are pursuing this avenue. So don't think this is, this is a good thing. And it's a good thing for the city who receives no tax dollars for this airport, which, and I'll say on the county side, that we would like to see economic development. And I think Millville is the center of that economic development for the townships, Fairfield, Lawrence Township, Commercial, even Morris River Township, that this is what can make, along with Nav Avenue, can make this thing move. All right, I appreciate you listening. It's just, I don't want to go on, you know how I talk, so, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you.
And, yes, actually, I have a, I have a function tomorrow night with the Atlantic County Economic Alliance, which operates beside Atlantic City International Airport. I did have a phone call with Mr. Hayden Antonucci about the federal level and the Congressman Van Drew's involvement of how and what Millville should do and how it should do it. That I would keep private and privy to myself and to my commissioners. It's an ongoing situation, and I appreciate the county's support, as well as other county's support, such as Cape May, which we've also just received some news today about that. Seeing no one else, I will close the public comment portion. Closing comments of commissioners. Commissioner Cosby, I know you had to say something.
Yes. Sitting here, listening, and being the newbie on board, I want to know what the intention of this commission wants tonight. Do we want to be that commission board who continues to seek payback when they don't get their way? Or are we going to be that commission that works together for the best interest of Millville? Our current board, since I've been attending for less than a year, has had eight different seated commissioners, plus one who declined to even take the oath. We have a new business administrator who is learning the ropes. We have a new zoning officer, zoning and planning board members who are coming and going through revolving doors, switching one side to another side. Now we have a resolution to replace the only stable figure that I see on this board, and that's Brock Russell. His 10 years of knowledge with this city government is invaluable, and our city needs stability, communication, and a commission that is finally ready to work together for one goal, and that's getting Millville back on track. Thank you.
You said how many new commissioners? Eight?
Well, when I count it, yes.
I got five.
Yeah, we're at number nine.
We're at number nine.
Number 10 coming shortly.
Including all of them.
All of them, yes.
Sorry.
Yes. Including everybody, yes.
I thought, I was just counting the swaps.
One never sat in a seat.
Correct. Got that. Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes, thank you. Mary, you were the only one spoke. I'm not going to pick on you, but I'm going to try and answer you. We do have a thing called Sunshine Law. We can't talk...
Can you speak into the microphone?
We can't talk amongst each other, aside from just one commissioner. This is our time. I've also sat in those seats, and I've watched the same thing happen with prior commissions. This is sadly how it works sometimes, because we don't get the time to sit down together legally. Are there a lot of things going? Sure, there's a lot of things going on in this city. And we got to figure out how to get them done. Yeah, I'm not proud of the fact that there's nine. We can, I could be soft and say eight commissioners, because one never took his seat, you know, never got sworn in, but it's nine. I keep taking these damn nitro pills I'm carrying in my pocket again, and it's going to be 10. But when it becomes 10, and I take that microphone back, you better hang on, because you know what I do with the microphone, because that's where it's getting to be. We have a situation now where we're divided, commission. Unfortunately for me, which I'm a big boy, I can hold, I can take it. I'm the only one that has remained in this same seat for over three years. I haven't given up on the city, I haven't given up on this commission, I haven't given up on my departments. But I will say, it's not a good look, and I will continue to voice my opinion, good, bad, or indifferent, threats of lawsuits or whatever, until I decide that I'm done, and then I'll be able to use my voice at that microphone. Mary, thanks for being involved. Everybody, thanks for being involved.
Commissioner Sui?
Yeah, first of all, thank you, Commissioner Albrecht, for publicizing the airport stuff. I think you're right on the money. I think it is a good move to get away from the DRBA. Second, you know, it's funny, Brock Russell was the lawyer, then he was traded for a different lawyer under a different commission, and I saw no outrage then, now I do. So that's rather interesting. As far as the move to the new warehouse goes, we cannot yet use the entire property because the environmentals are not complete. There are Phase II environmentals required. I believe I saw an email, they're coming Friday to take soil samples or whatever for the back area, so the move is not complete. As far as the smooth transition of power, when Mr. Watson took over the Revenue and Finance part of the job, I offered Mr. Watson access to all my emails so that he could gain historical perspective as well, see what was going on with the department to ensure a smooth transition. Mr. Watson declined that, saying that it would only serve to confuse him, which, okay, there was a lot of emails, maybe he didn't have time to read them all, didn't want to read them all, whatever. So I did attempt to make a smooth transition. Now, when there are commissioners up here, think one way is the right thing to do things, and somebody else thinks a different way to do things, we're going to have little battles. And that's what happens. You know, that's the way it goes. So that's politics. It's not always pretty. Not everybody thinks that we should always make the same decisions, and that's how it goes. And with that, progress.
Vice Mayor Watson?
I don't know how anybody would stay organized with thousands of emails coming in over the past three years, but, okay. I think I've done a pretty good job trying to catch up with things. You know, I've only been in position for a little over a month and a half as far as Revenue and Finance goes. Always still trying to learn the ropes. Think I'm a quick learner. You know, obviously, we depend on the professionals, City Millville has. Other than that, I don't really have anything else to say.
In the Walsh Act, the vice mayor position is created because underneath the Walsh Act, Revenue and Finance automatically puts that person as vice mayor titles. Underneath the Walsh Act, the person that serves as mayor gets sworn in as the mayor of Millville, the only position in the Walsh Act. Just think that should be public knowledge, in case, because the Walsh Act is very, very complicated to understand. Appreciate the discussions. Any resolutions, Madam Clerk?
No, Mayor.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?